...about the sequence of events that have gotten us here. So, looking forward to the presentation by Chief Chadwick. I should say that I thought the staff report was very helpful and I wanted to thank you for that work.
Thank you. I'm gonna try and do it from here. Hopefully the clicker works for us and we can move along. So, again, good evening Mayor, City Council. I'm Josh Chadwick, Benicia Fire Chief. And the item for you, as the Mayor mentioned, is it serves as a requested six-month follow-up to the Valero report and it also presents a written legal agreement for council's consideration. So before we jump into the report, I think it's important to give a brief reminder of how we got here. Tonight's report is actually a continuation of a council discussion that began back in June 19th of 2018. And at that meeting, council discussed a two-step request to review a draft industrial safety ordinance and make recommendations for future consideration. After lengthy discussion and public comment, council took action to: One, direct staff to monitor Slana County's implementation of CALAR Program 4 regulations. Two, direct staff to address the few gaps that exist between Contra Costa's ISO and Program 4, including more effective and frequent communications with city, Valero and the community. Three, require Valero to have fence line monitors installed within six months while continuing to negotiate the installation of community monitors. Four, develop an evacuation plan. And five, report back to council at the first meeting in November on the progress towards this direction. So per the direction of item five on the previous slide, the report was brought back to city council on November 20th of 2018. And at that meeting, staff provided an update on both Valero's and the city's progress on the direction given at that June meeting. After the presentation, public comment and council deliberation, direction was given to return in another six months and provide an update on various items, including progress on the air monitoring programs, improving communication and coordination between the city and Valero, increased access to incident notification reports, increased public participation and engagement, and the financial impacts to the city for implementing the various programs. And additionally, that night, council gave direction to staff to work with Valero to memorialize the numerous concerns and do an agreement between the two parties. So, the development process continued over the next six months and staff worked on developing the agreement. It's important to note, I'm really proud of this agreement that's being presented tonight, but really most of the credit goes to council and to members of the public. Many of them are sitting in the audience today. The reason is because most of the content of the agreement actually comes from input that we've received from draft ordinancees and other public comment that we've heard over the last, I would say, year, but really more like many years. So, it's important to note. And I also want to note that in addition to the development of the agreement, we also drafted a very comprehensive incident notification policy and that one was modeled after the Contra Costa County's incident notification policy. And ultimately, we ended up with a final document that I feel is a common sense approach to achieving the results that the community has been asking for. So, as I mentioned, the issues that were categorized really into six main overarching goals and they're listed on this slide. I'm not going to read each one because really the rest of the presentation goes through each one in detail. But there they are. So the first goal, the first goal is to establish a robust air monitoring program with transparent community access to the data. This issue's been a concern in Benicia for quite a long time and we've had, it's been loud and clearly heard that we need improved air monitoring in the city. And the solutions identified are fence line monitors, community monitors, and portable monitors, all working in conjunction to build a robust system. So I'll start with fence line monitors. In June of 2018, Valero began the installation of their Bay Area Air Quality Management District, or BACMED-approved, fence line air monitoring, uh, air monitors. This project was completed in November of 2018. And while it was a really, it was a really good first step in a comprehensive program, there was concern in the community that the monitors left a portion of the fence line unmonitored, specifically the northwest portion along Waters End. Then in February of 2019, there was an agreement between the city, the Good Neighbor Steering Committee, and Valero. It was actually the Second Amendment to the Good Neighbor Steering Agreement. And that was approved by council. And that agreement required Valero to construct and install and maintain the fence line along that northwest boundary that we were talking about. It's been referred to in the past as Path 4. Regarding the community monitors, those, the community monitors differ from fence line monitors. Fence line monitors are open path monitors that basically shoot a beam across a long stretch of land, whereas community monitors are generally ground level, single point monitors that are located outside of Valero's property. Currently, there are three older style monitors that are, they've been there for a long time, but there's been interest in improving that and adding more to strategic locations throughout the city. So again, as part of the Second Amendment to the Good Neighbor, Valero Good Neighbor Steering Committee Agreement, approved by council in February, Valero agreed to provide $460,000 to the Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program, or B-CAM, for additional community air monitoring. And I want to note that that is a nonprofit, independent organization. It's not a government agency. It's not going to be run by the city of Benicia. And then finally, with portable monitors, I really believe the fence line monitors and the community monitors are great, but from a public safety standpoint, we need a more versatile solution for air monitoring. So from an emergency response standpoint, what we want is portable air monitors. These will be located on fire department vehicles and quickly deployed in the field. Really, they give fire personnel real-time access to specific locations that we would get called to and enable us to make informed decisions. So on January 22nd of 2019, Valero provided the city of Benicia with six of these portable air monitors. The total cost for the Valero contribution was $48,342 and the agreement presented tonight has a acknowledgement, a knowledge receipt of those monitors. So moving on to Goal 2. Goal 2 was to increase public participation and engagement, including input on planning documents. And the issue here is there's concern that Benicia citizens are not given the opportunity to participate in the development process of various health and safety documents and plans. And so the solutions identified are the Risk Management Plan, the Safety Plan, and the Public Liaison for Hazardous Materials. I'll go through each of these briefly. The Risk Management Plan, that's intended to prevent accidental releases of regulated substances. It includes a hazard assessment or release prevention program and emergency response program. The agreement presented tonight requires Valero to provide the Risk Management Plan to the Benicia Fire Department. This plan will be made available for public comment for 45 calendar days. And upon completion of that public comment period, the comments will be forwarded to Slana County CUPA for review. And then once the plan is complete, the city will post the Risk Management Plan publicly. The next one is the Process Safety Performance Indicators Report. You can think of this sort of as a site-specific safety plan, which documents safety performance indicators. And again, the agreement tonight requires Valero to provide the Process Safety Performance Indicators Report to the Benicia Fire Department and that report will be due annually and again made publicly available. The next item is the Public Liaison for Hazardous Materials. So the Benicia Fire Department will appoint a division chief to serve as a public liaison. That person will be appointed contact for people who live or work in the city regarding environmental health concerns, questions, and complaints about hazardous materials programs. The public liaison will be empowered to identify and solve problems and make recommendations. His or her role will be one of investigating concerns and complaints, facilitating their resolution, assisting people in gathering information about programs and procedures or other issues. And the agreement presented tonight requires Valero to cooperate with the public liaison and respond to requests for information regarding hazardous materials and health concerns. So Goal 3 was to increase public notification and awareness, including access to reports and inspection results. And the concern here is that Benicia citizens have not been given the opportunity to be fully notified of Valero or refinery-related health and safety issues, including incident notifications and post-incident investigations. And the solutions identified here are the 72-hour post-incident notification report, the incident investigation report, and the Public Information Bank. So the agreement presented requires Valero to provide the Benicia Fire Department with a 72-hour post-incident report when significant incidents or events occur at the refinery. The criteria for initiating this 72-hour report, as well as its format and required data, are detailed in the Benicia Hazardous Materials Incident Notification Policy I mentioned earlier, and that should be included in your packet as Exhibit 8 to Attachment 2. And the 72-hour reports will also be available publicly. The next item details, deals with incident investigation reports. So CALAR Code of Regulations Title 19 requires Valero to develop, implement, and maintain effective written procedures for promptly investigating and reporting situations that result in or could have resulted in major incidents. In addition to the requirement that this report is given to Slana County, the agreement presented tonight requires Valero to provide the report directly to the city of Benicia. And once again, this report will be publicly available. And the next item is the Public Information Bank. So throughout this presentation, I keep referring to these documents being publicly available. So really, as Benicia gains, you know, as our residents gain access to these new documents and safety plans, investigation reports, planning documents, notifications, we've identified that there needs to be a single, easy-to-locate search and, you know, place to locate all of this information. So our plan is to develop a single, public-facing website to post and archive all of these documents. And it's important to note that certain information in these documents may be protected from disclosure by federal and state law and those would be required to be redacted. So Goal number four is to improve communication and coordination between Valero and the city. So this issue is that there have been instances in the past with poor communication and really a lack of coordination between the city and Valero. And the solutions identified are the Valero Emergency Procedures Manual, the Emergency Operations Center Coordination, Emergency Response Training, Incident Notification Policy, and the Valero Community Advisory Panel meetings. So the Valero Emergency Procedures Manual, it's a planning document. It's written by Valero and it's designed to really guide their response to emergencies at the facility. So in the past, this, this document's been provided to me in my office on a regular basis and recently I was reviewing it and found some inconsistencies with either prior documents or county procedures. And so the agreement presented tonight requires Valero to review this Emergency Procedures Manual annually and then solicit comments from the Benicia Fire Chief in connection with each annual review. Going on to the EOC coordination, we've had past incidents where both the city and Valero activated their respective EOCs and the result has been poor communication and coordination. And we recognized this a while back and the city and Valero have verbally agreed to a solution where whenever the city notifies Valero that the city has, EOC has been activated for any incident that might affect Valero, Valero will immediately dispatch a representative to the city's EOC. Additionally, whenever Valero activates their EOC for an incident that might have off-site implications, a city representative will fill liaison position at the Valero EOC. And it was identified that while this verbal agreement is great, this, it needs to be memorialized. So this was part of the agreement that's being looked at tonight and it would memorialize that plan in a legal document. Probably goes without saying that emergency response training is a critical component to our jobs and keeping the public safe. So tonight's agreement incorporates provisions requiring regular joint training with the city and Valero staff. And the training includes both EOC training and field training and it's required to be completed annually. Incident Notification Policy. So I've mentioned this earlier, but there have been concerns in the past regarding inconsistent, sometimes inadequate notifications to the city of incidents at Valero. Therefore, the fire department staff worked to develop a comprehensive incident notification policy. Like I mentioned, the policy was modeled after Contra Costa's policy and it, again, it's included in your packet. The agreement presented tonight requires Valero to follow that policy. And then finally, the Valero Community Advisory Panel, or CAP, that's a group whose role's to provide ongoing communications between the city and the community and Valero on matters of mutual concern related to refinery and its impact on the community. A membership of the CAP includes a member of the Benicia City Council, Benicia Chamber of Commerce, the Benicia Industrial Park Association, the Benicia Unified School District, the Good Neighbor Steering Committee, and two community members at large. Although the fire department doesn't have a representative as a member of the CAP, the agreement presented tonight includes language that the Benicia Fire representative will be present at Valero CAP meetings. So moving on to Goal 5. This was to increase city involvement, allowing the city to have a seat at the table for inspections, investigations, reviews, et cetera. And the issue is that although Valero's located entirely within the Benicia city limits, the facility's ultimately regulated by county, regional, state, federal agencies, and the city hasn't had the full input that we've, that some of those other agencies have had. And there's longstanding sentiment in the community that the city is missing a seat at the table when it comes to receiving information from Valero and making decisions which impact the community. And the solution to this is accomplished by Valero signing this new agreement, which ensures that we have a seat at the table. Finally, Goal 6. It's to establish a means for the city to pay for the numerous initiatives described in the previous list of goals. So the issue here is that a great deal of city fire department administrative staff time is currently spent on emergency preparedness, hazardous materials training and response, community emergency alert, notification, community engagement, and other activities that are directly related to Valero. This takes time away from other critical administrative functions. With the development of this agreement, the workload of the fire department will increase significantly. To appropriately manage this program, the fire department needs to fill one additional division chief position. And the solution identified for this is that Valero has, recognizes this and is agreeing to fund the position. Specifically, Valero agrees the impact of the operations has on staff and agrees to support the position move forward by including an annual payment of $278,000 to cover the fully burdened cost of the position. The payment will be made on July 1st of each year and will adjust annually based on the So our recommendation tonight is for council to move to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Benicia-Valero Cooperation Agreement. The next steps would include completing the signatures needed to finalize the agreement, receive the first year's payment from Valero, hire one additional fire division chief, and then begin implementing all sections of the agreement. And again, before I get into questions, I'd like to just take a moment to thank council for giving us the opportunity to work on this. Like I said, I really believe it's a good common sense approach to getting the results that we've been looking for and I'm available for questions.
All right. I suspect that we do have some questions. Thanks for the comprehensive presentation. So before we take public comment, we're going to see if there are questions from council members. Do you have any lights on? Councilmember Campbell and Councilmember Lagerfata?
I just want to say, yeah, I thought it was a really good agreement. I think you did a really, really good job on this, when you did this. So Chief, just one thing, I liked that you answered pretty much everything I wanted in it. One minor question, those community air monitors, you know anything about what's going on with them?
So my understanding, and I may be wrong, is, my understanding is that the check has already been written and it, I believe, went to Dana Dean, who's holding on to it until the nonprofit status can be finalized. And I believe the trailer has already been given to the organization. I do know we have members of the organization here who could answer that question probably better than I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, as a follow-up, there is also what we talked about yesterday, the CALA PA community monitor. And I understand that they've identified a site. It was provided by Ted Goldberg for news and it'll be the Robert Semple School. And so that is another community air monitor. And then the, the community one that you referred to where the trailer's out at the Russell woodworking facility is the non-governmental organization, community air monitor. Okay? Lots of community. Councilmember Lagerfata?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, likewise, Josh, this is tremendous. I appreciate your leadership on this, on this effort. I think this is a terrific example of a successful public-private partnership and what can be done when multiple parties get together with a shared vision and goal. So congratulations. I have a couple of quick questions. You know, I just would love to get some insight into the process and specifically, do you feel that Valero acted as a good neighbor throughout this negotiation, if you will? The second, and I think you've mentioned this a couple of times, I encourage you to expand as much as you want, and that is, you know, are you, I don't want to put a number on it, but are you, you know, 100% satisfied with this agreement, 99%, you know, somewhere along the lines? And then the last one is going back to your next steps. Can you provide some clarity on the implementation process? You've made it sound like this is literally a linear process, like we can't move forward until the division chief is hired. Or is it, that's the preference, but there are other elements that will move forward? Specifically, I think it's the, one of the reports that needs to be finalized or delivered to the city by September 30th of this year. So I just wanted to make sure I understood the timeline. Thank you.
Yeah. So first one, were they a good neighbor? I think in any, it was a negotiation process and in any negotiation process, there's times where you walk away frustrated and I also think there were times where we both walked away frustrated and we both, you know, and a lot of this was going back and forth through emails and involving city attorneys and whatnot. But in the end, now, I feel like, yes, they were a good, a good neighbor and a good partner. And what I really feel like is that we had a common goal of public safety. They obviously have a goal that's, you know, looking out for their company and we have a goal looking out for our city. But ultimately, I think when it came down to public safety, yes, that they were a good neighbor. I was satisfied with that. And as far as percentage of satisfied, again, you know, going into any kind of negotiation, I think I probably asked for more in the beginning. I asked for the world, knowing that we weren't going to get it. And I think, you know, that's probably normal. But in the end, now that it's, you know, that we're presenting this to you, let's go with 95%. And then as far as the implementation, yeah, so that slide does talk about next steps. In reality, implementation's already started to some extent. They've already started, we've been working on this for six months. We've already started following through with a lot of these things, including going back to the, I mean, some examples are the joint EOC training. We've already been doing that. They had an incident where we did get a 72-hour report even though it wasn't required yet, you know? The, the communication has been improved and I think a lot of it is part of that. So there are parts of it that are already happening, but some of the heavy lifting, you know, work that needs to be done, I just, I need some staffing to assist with it. It's taken a lot.
All right. Councilmember Young and then Vice Mayor Strobridge.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is clearly an improvement over what we have, which is nothing. I think, I do have some specific questions and hopefully suggestions that might allow us to improve it even more. The $278,000 that Valero's going to pay, you said was for the salary benefits, fully loaded for a division chief. That did not include pensions, I assume, right?
No, that did, it included the full pension, including the unfunded liability portion of the pension.
I'm sorry, you said it did include pension or did not?
It did include pension.
So the 278 is salary, benefits, and some pension payment?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I do a follow-up on that? I, I had the impression, as we talked yesterday, that it also says in the agreement, "and for expertise, if necessary." So the 278 covers not only the salary costs, but also the potential need for outside expertise. I don't have the exact language in the agreement, but that was the way I remember reading it.
I can say that the 278 covers the fully burdened cost for a top-step division chief position, medical, all the benefits, and all of the retirement costs that go with it. There's language in there about that the public liaison person may utilize outside expertise, but that wasn't in the same section that was talking about the funding.
And that's not funded?
I guess I wouldn't know what that funding would need to be now.
Okay. So it's something for us to think about?
May I continue?
Yes, please.
So this is a six-year agreement. If at some point Valero cancels the agreement, then the city is on the hook, basically, for those ongoing costs for that new division chief.
Well, I mean, the council has the direction, or just the ability to make the decisions with their staffing as they see fit, I would say.
Okay. And on that question, you and I have spoken electronically about this and you indicated that it is your strong desire to fill this internally and to not advertise outside.
I, what I expressed is that I have a strong belief in the fire service that you should be able to promote from within and that if you don't, and you don't have people that are ready to fulfill those positions, I feel like we're failing as a department. Now, if there's nobody that wants to take the position, but they're qualified and capable, then that's a different story. But I believe that we need to prepare our members to be ready to go to the next level.
And so you think there's somebody on, in your department who is qualified in terms of having the technical expertise and the background in environmental management issues that could step right in and do this?
I do, with the caveat that I'm not going anywhere. So I'll be there, available. And I've, I can tell you, I've learned a lot in the last year of just dealing with these things. And then there is the ability to reach out and phone a friend, if you will.
And would you be looking to backfill this position?
Backfill?
In terms of, if somebody's promoted from a captain to a division chief, would you then be looking to fill that captain slot and, or would we be looking at adding another body?
Absolutely. We have the staffing that we were, you know, that you'll be looking at in the next item on the budget. And we've done an analysis based on overtime costs versus filling those positions and it makes financial sense to fill the positions, so.
And this position would be dedicated only to dealing with Valero issues?
No. If you look at the report, it really, it covers, there's going to be times where I'm going to have to do some of this stuff. There's times where the city manager will want to talk to the fire chief about something. There will be times where it would be more appropriate for the fire chief to do a community engagement. But right now, the way our staffing is, I don't have the capacity to do it because I don't have a division chief that could cover, cover the calls while I'm on it. I'm, I'm the division chief and the fire chief, you know, two days a week. And so it really spreads that capacity out. So there's also times where what if that, anybody that you hired was on vacation, you know, and they're in Hawaii for a week and something comes up? We're not going to say that they're the only person and the community can't get their answers unless they talk to that one person. So I would say it, it backfills the capacity.
And if we approve this agreement tonight, we are, at the same time, then, authorizing the creation of this position?
Correct.
And the filling of it?
That's my whole understanding.
Are there other alternatives? I mean, I'm glad that Valero's putting up the money to do this, but are there other alternatives that the council should consider rather than a division chief, perhaps an outside expert who could do this same kind of stuff, perhaps with a greater level of technical understanding?
So I feel like this is the right decision, if you're asking my opinion. The language that, where it came from was from the Benicia Working Group's ISO. They had a different term for it. Instead of liaison, it was an ombudsperson. I changed the name to liaison and copied the exact same language. And that refers to the department and in the definition of the department, it says the Benicia Fire Department.
So if I could just do a couple of questions as a follow-up as you're asking. So the first thing is, so it's really a program, not a specific person. It's a person because you need the, the body to help you get some of the things done. But at the end of the day, it's really focused on a program where you have expertise that can focus on. can focus on the issues that you've iterated in the presentation.
I guess I would agree with that to some extent, yeah.
Okay. And then let me ask Mr. Stock. The, on the agreement, it's a very explicit language in the agreement. Is there, would there be any problem with the city outsourcing the, the concept that's in this program?
The city can decide how it wants to fulfill its obligations through any source it wants, through the funding outside of the agreement. The agreement is, as you mentioned, a program of responsibilities both parties have. And the fire chief is recommending a position be created to assist with that, but certainly doesn't prohibit the city from hiring outside expertise to further assist. The city should need that type of technical expertise.
Or, or in place of it?
No, not in place of it. I mean, the agreement envisions having a public liaison.
Right.
Designated by the fire department as a fire department employee. If that employee needs assistance, other technical assistance, there's nothing prohibiting the city from getting that technical assistance.
But you're saying that the council, if we thought that it was more efficient to hire outside expertise rather than create a new division chief, we could not do that?
Not under this agreement, no.
We could not amend the agreement to make that so?
Well, we'd have to, that's not the agreement before you tonight.
Right. But we have the ability to...
Request amendment.
Right, okay.
Can I just respond to that just briefly also? The dollar amount came from the position. So I would think that if you're thinking that you, it would save money to get, maybe you mentioned more efficient position, then I would think that the dollar amount would have to go down to match the more efficient position.
If I might just interject, I apologize. I think it would be great for the fire chief to talk a little bit more about why he is recommending that it be this position. He's talked to me about the kind of background and expertise, needing additional expertise notwithstanding perhaps in some cases. But this hazardous materials background for this person to have to be able to be the point for this particular assignment seemed like a perfect match for the division chief position that he's recommending.
So to put it another way, the division chief is not your father's fire hose person. The division chief goes through the hazardous training, which I believe actually started back in Contra Costa years ago. So, but to answer that question, if you could elaborate on the position?
Yeah, I mean, I think you did, you, very true that we're not the, it's not the old-school fireman position. We're all risk firefighter's and we've gotten, you know, extensive hazardous materials EMS training in addition to firefighting training. And the other part to this is having, having, unfortunately, having had to deal with a lot of Valero issues over the last couple of years, that relationship is built on, on emergency calls that are smaller, has a huge impact on the bigger incidents as well. I mean, the working relationship with the chief of the Valero Fire Brigade and our division chiefs is very good. We work with them in the EOC on a regular basis. To me, it would be a huge step backwards to take, bring in an outside person to try and fill that role. I don't know, I probably didn't articulate that as clearly as the city manager would, I have with her, but really that, I think that would be a huge mistake.
All right. Let me continue on a different question. On the fence line monitors, the ones that are installed now are the ones that BACMed required them to install?
I missed the beginning of that. Do you say the fence line monitors?
The fence line monitors.
That's correct.
And during the March incident, reportedly, those were not working properly. There was no detection reported of any emissions during that entire time, I understand.
The, no. The emissions coming out of that were particulate matter. Fence line monitors do not measure particulate matter.
Understood.
So yes, they were accurately measuring the other items.
Did they measure hydrogen sulfide?
No fence line monitors are currently measuring hydrogen sulfide.
But that isn't an emission that we should theoretically be concerned about?
So I've done quite a bit of research on this. So the hydrogen sulfide in open path monitors, that technology is not completed yet. When the Bay Area Air Quality District required them to have this done in a certain amount of time, and then the city council significantly increased their, or shortened that timeline, the manufacturer that makes those products said that they would have it done, and they don't. Right now, it's, it will measure, it'll give you a number, but that number isn't always totally accurate. It gets affected by fog or other items in the air, and they're working to get that taken care of. None of the Contra Costa refineries have fence line monitors that measure, measure hydrogen sulfide.
The, the emissions data that is reported is in real time?
That's correct.
And it's publicly available to anybody who, I guess, knows the right place to go to look for it?
That's correct.
And that's for the entire fence line program?
For the entire fence line that's constructed now. Now, the, the recent agreement is going to have them constructing a new path, and that's not up yet.
But that also will be publicly available, real-time data?
That's correct.
You, you mentioned a sort of a separate website, this Public Information Bank, as a repository for reports, I guess. Why are you recommending, well, first of all, who would maintain that?
So, again, this language was taken from the Contra Costa Industrial Safety Ordinance, and they have a public information bank. I talked to Randy Sawyer about it. When they started that process, it was a binder. And it was, they kept it at the county office. Later, it was, I apparently moved to the library. Nobody ever came and looked at it. As technology increased, it made a lot more sense to use electronic means. So they just did a simple webpage on, you know, on a, on a website. To me, it's city that's gathering that data, so it should be the city that's controlling it.
Right.
And I've talked to our IT department. There's adding a single page to the city, either the fire department section or, you know, main page or somewhere along that, that's easily accessible. There's no cost to that.
Okay. That's good. That's what I wanted to hear. That's going to be part of the city website, not a standalone, different website that somebody would have to know to go look for.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So you have it done?
I have, well, I have some questions. I'll hold them until after public comment, if you like. I have some more.
Okay, that's good. Vice Mayor Starbridge?
I reiterate, my colleague, Councilmember Campbell, I think that the staff did an excellent job on this, and it was the goal to develop a good relationship with Valero, to strengthen the communication. And getting back to what Councilmember Young was talking about, I think that it's really important that we do get a representative, that's going to be the person at the table that knows our community, knows the department, the city fire department, and also knows Valero. And I think that that's part of our relationship building that's crucial to this agreement. I did have one question in reading through the report. On the May 7th incident, I was home, I received some calls and flipped on the television, and there was a lot of misinformation out there right away. And the news media jumped on this, and they were interviewing citizens who were obviously afraid and didn't know where to get the information. I know that there was a press conference later, but do we have in place how to react to the media when things like this happen? Because there was just a lot of misinformation out there to start with.
So the short answer is yes, but the caveat is that really, anytime you have a significant incident like that, there is going to be a period of, that appears chaotic, and there is going to be misinformation, and there's not going to be any way to squash that 100%. What I can tell you is that every time we have a significant incident, even down to the fire, you know, a simple house fire, we do an after-action review. And we certainly did after-action reviews on the May 7th incident, and the communication was one of the big topics that got discussed. Items got put into place that will improve that significantly. We learned, there was a lot of lessons learned, and I believe we've made progress, and we will probably continue to make progress. Will I be able to sit here and say that there won't ever be misinformation? Absolutely not.
Just to follow up on that, so when an incident happens, do we have like a media outreach? Is that going to be part of the captain or part of the, the team, somebody in the team's responsibility?
Yes, absolutely. So we have members of our staff and redundant members of our staff that are trained as public information officers, and they're continuing to get ongoing training. We exercise their roles when we do our EOC drills, and we've implemented the, the update to the emergency operation plan that has information about that as well.
All right, thanks very much. So this is the opportunity for public comment and questions, and I'm going to start with the cards that I have. The first one is Marilyn Bardet. And then, and did you guys, you, you often are organized, so, all right, just, of the three cards, the first one will be Kathy Carriage, and who will follow, and then Constance Butel, and then Marilyn Bardet will wrap up.
Good evening. Excuse me. Kathy Carriage, I'm a 33-year resident member of the Good Neighbor Steering Committee, a refinery watchdog group that's been working with refinery for 20 years. I am not speaking tonight in any capacity as a Sustainability Commission member. The MOU before you is a good start. There's some good things in it that we've wanted for years. However, I urge you not to authorize it as is. It has many provisions that are not strong enough and need to be changed. I'm rather surprised that the council itself had no part in negotiating this agreement and that there's been little time to review it. I'm surprised there's been no consultation with independent refinery and air pollution experts. I believe we should be consulting experts, especially when it comes to ambient air quality, and make sure we have things like that in this agreement. I'll go through the agreement in order to share some of my concerns. Paragraph one, the city will report to Valero information for portable monitors that it is outside of acceptable ranges. There's no requirement there to report to the public, and there's no definition of acceptable limits. There's no interpretation of results provided for. The public needs to know what readings are, especially in emergency situations, and there seems to be no requirement to record the data or archive it. This is the only mention in the entire agreement for air monitors. Richmond has three community air monitoring stations. Benicia will have one with the B Camp monitors, that one set up by the Air Board, but who knows when that, that will happen. And I really believe we should have a third community air monitoring station, and this is an opportunity to try to get it, and it's not in this agreement. We have people on all sides of the refinery, and I don't even think two air monitoring stations are enough. Throughout the agreement, it's clear that confidential and proprietary information should not be released. The agreement refers to both homeland security and other data restrictions applicable to Solano County Unified Program Agency. But we all know that companies often use proprietary information to keep the public in the dark. And there's a question about whether or not information, if there is a question about whether or not information is proprietary, there's nothing in here to provide for resolution. It appears to me Benicia is giving up all authority to Solano County, and I hate to say this, but they haven't been very aggressive with information in the past. Paragraph five, in this, Benicia sensually gives up all authority to ever change its hazardous material incident notification policy and have it applied to Valero. We should be able to change this in the future if need arises. Paragraph six, again, we come back to the confidentiality. Valero gets to designate what information is provided to the city. I think that's a big loophole. What are the limits of this confidentiality? Is there any way to resolve a conflict? Paragraph 10, representation on the cap. Actually, Valero doesn't control who sits on the cap, the city does. I don't know why that's even in the agreement, because it seems to me the city can appoint whoever they'd like. Big concern, why does this end in 2025? Does the city feel all refiners will be absolutely safe by then and not have any releases? Why is there an end date? Paragraph 15, subsection three, makes a whole agreement null and void if the city imposes any new regulations on Valero that are more burdensome than state or federal laws. Now, we have a federal government who's actively trying to eliminate all environmental protections. Do we really want to depend on federal regulations for our local health and safety? Who knows what kinds of risks there may apply in the future? No one thought about crude byrel five years ago. Why in the world would we have local environment, health, and safety regulations dependent upon federal laws? What's missing? There's nothing about root cause analysis, except for something in the 72-hour report that says that if there is going to be one, it should be reported upon. In attachment B, it's clear that the only time there will be a 72-hour report is when actual harm is done. I think we should put something in here where if there are repeated incidents around the same thing, even if actual harm isn't done, we should be looking at what's going on and what kind of root cause analysis there should be. There's nothing about advance notice to the community if the refinery knows we'll have an increase in admission, such as during a turnaround. I think that's really important for schools. Finally, I don't see any penalties for noncompliance. What happens if Valero doesn't abide by this agreement? I think this is a great starting point. I think it needs work. We had a zillion hearings about marijuana. To have one hearing about this, basically, I feel the process is really being rushed, and I urge you not to rush it through. Thank you.
Well, we have Councilmember Campbell first, and I wanted to get a clarification from the city attorney on a couple of the points that were made. So starting with Councilmember Campbell.
I can wait. Go ahead.
Do you want to have clarification from the city attorney on a couple of the points?
It was actually for Kathy. I was just not clear on one of them.
I wasn't clear on that first point you made about paragraph one, saying that the data would not be available to the public?
Well, I don't know if the data will be available to the public, but there's certainly no requirement here that the data, what, the, if I quote the agreement, it says the city shall promptly, this is regarding portable air monitors. Quote, "The city shall promptly provide Valero with any data collected from these monitors that falls outside of acceptable ranges and is reasonably related to the refinery." Now, as a member of the public, I want to trust that the city would also be releasing that information to the public.
Okay.
But there's nothing in the agreement that provides for that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thanks very much. Do you want to wait until after we hear from the public to respond, both to Chief Chagwick and to Ms. Tenfo and to city attorney, Mr. Stock? So what is your preference? Do you want to respond now or, because I, I do want you to respond. Do you want to wait until the rest of the public?
I'd be happy to respond to whatever questions you want me to respond to.
At this time?
No, I think after public comment, once you bring it back.
Okay, thanks.
I did have a question, however.
Go, go ahead, Councilmember Campbell.
The first one, we'll get to those air monitors in a minute. First one was the thing about burdensome than applicable to state and federal laws. You, you aren't implying that the state of California somehow is going to, you know, back off and be like the federal government, are you? I mean, we're basically the poster child for, you know, environmental, public entities probably on the whole planet.
I know, but that's not, the agreement says, let me find it.
It's, uh...
This is in paragraph 15. Uh, no, wait a minute.
Page 415.3.
It, right, it's, it's... It says, any things that are duplicate or more burdensome than applicable state or federal laws. To me, that means if the federal law is more burdensome, we couldn't do it. Or if the state law is more burdensome, we couldn't do it. Or if the federal law is less burdensome. So if you have a federal law that's been decimated and we enact something that's more burdensome, that would null and void the entire agreement. It's the way I read that, that. Now, maybe different people have different interpretations, but then when I see we can't have anything that's more burdensome than federal, it doesn't say and/or federal laws, it says or federal laws, which to me means it's either one.
Well, okay, there, there's a whole bunch of lawyers looking at this, aren't there? You know, so maybe we'll let the one that sort of... You know, so maybe we'll let the one that sort of is our lawyer, if he wants to throw his two bits in in a minute, you know, after everything's done. The other thing I had...
Yeah, it should be clear, I think. I mean, I think we want to make sure the agreement's clear.
All right, you know, there's no words missing there, you know, I don't have a big problem with that. You know, it's just the idea somehow to me that somehow you're going to do something more burdensome than the state of California, which state of California is pretty tough on environmental issues.
Right, and if you maybe eliminated the federal laws, I wouldn't...
Anyway, the other thing, you know, I have is, again, the community air monitors, that's a big thing to me, you know, we sort of talked about that a little bit. And so I was just wondering, where exactly are we with Good Neighbor Steering Committee? Because I know I gave you guys the Clean Air Board, the thing for grant, and, you know, so it was hoping to be done, and that was February.
Well, we haven't, we're in the process of forming the nonprofit, which I think has to be really set up and running probably before we can do much of the grant applying. We have gotten the trailer, so it has been delivered. We have had an initial inventory done, and we're going to be in the process of seeing, making sure that the equipment is all operative and seeing what needs to be updated with it. But the nonprofit takes a little while to get that up and running off the ground.
Okay, because that was February 2018, not February 2019, I think. You know, it might have been 19, I was just looking at it.
Well, I would like it to have been, have happened sooner.
But yeah, that's the problem, you know, you can't apply for the grant until you're a nonprofit, as you well know, so...
Yeah.
Kind of might want to get going on that.
So I'm anxious for that to happen also.
Okay, okay. I'll quit prodding you guys on that, that's...
That's fine.
But anyway, okay, you know, maybe we'll get back to, anyone wants to follow along with wordsmithing, that termination part on 15 down there, three, that one long sentence there, I'm game, you know, if anyone wants to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Constance Butel?
The timer here. I can't do it in 24 seconds. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members, city staff, and fellow Beniscians. My name is Constance Butel. I live at 1501 Shannon Court for the past 30 years, and I'm speaking as a representative of the Good Neighbor Steering Committee. I urge council to reject this proposed agreement as it is, since it is inadequate and not meeting the community health and safety needs and concerns. I will review what council discussed at the June 19th and 20th, 2018 council meetings about Valero and community safety. All council members in both meetings highlighted the need to address poor communications from Valero. To quote you, Councilmember Young, you said that the people's right to know is paramount. There was also to be a comparison of Program 4 and the Contra Costa County ISO to address gaps. Unfortunately, not a comparison to the proposed Benicia ISO. The June meeting set the mandate for Valero to install fence line monitoring, which was an impending requirement as stated by Chief Chadwick of the Air District for all refineries within a six-month period. This monitoring was to provide online openly accessible real-time monitoring data. Further, you, Councilmember Campbell, stated both in June and November that the same data that Valero gives to the state and Air Board is to be given to the city. I'm not talking about reports, but data. In November's meeting, you, Steve Young, asked that the monitors be expanded to show more chemicals, you mentioned that again. For example, the fence line monitors and Valero's three ground-level monitors do not show black carbon nor particulate matter, specifically PM 2.5. Councilmember Campbell, you wanted to know the status of the Northwest Fence Line, which was formally agreed to in the Valero Good Neighbor Steering Committee recent final settlement. We see that that status is missing from this presentation. Because the GNSC and Valero has not yet, had not yet settled the case in November 2018, we were unable, as the GNSC, to say anything about the Valero-held air monitoring trailer. However, it is important now to clarify misperceptions about community air monitoring stations in Benicia. Valero has three locations in Benicia that have been referred to as community monitors. Officially, they are ground-level monitors, and they show on the benicia refinery airmonitors.org website. They are owned and operated for and by Valero, and that data is reported to the Air District. We understand that the Air District, or Cal EPA, has moved forward to provide one community air monitor station to be located at Semple School. This station will be owned and operated for and by the Air District. The GNSC has, with the recent final settlement, received the trailer and is in the process of forming a nonprofit organization, B Camp, as you've heard. The air monitoring station will be an independent of Valero, the city of Benicia, and the Air District. It will be operated with real-time data for the benefit of Beniscians and surrounding communities. This air monitoring station is not part of this proposed agreement in any way. In summary, given the March 2019 major incident at Valero and the breakdown in timely communications to the community, where people had to rely on residential purple air monitors and next-door comments, the lack of publicly available emissions monitoring and measuring of black carbon and particulate matter, the non-user-friendly Valero website with monitoring equipment frequently offline, and questionable reliability of data reporting, your original strong demands as council for robust communications, reporting, and monitoring, and finally, the fire department doesn't have the concern about ambient air quality. You are charged with incidents. We, the public, do care about that ambient air quality. I urge you to reject this agreement as it's written. Thank you.
All right, any questions of Ms. Butel? Councilmember Campbell?
Let's move back to, you know, that a little bit. You know, particulate matter, you know, you really can't do with a particular, you know, absorption, emission, you know, lines which are out there for the fence line. However, with the community air monitors, you sure can. You know, that's one of the things that they can do. You've sort of forgot to mention that Valero gave $460,000 to you to produce a community air monitoring system with information system connected to it, so that, you know, I, for example, as a resident, could go to an online website and see exactly what you are implying is not, you know, out there in the future to be done, because that is your responsibility with those community air monitors, at least the way I read what we agreed to, that you would, you know, have those things online in somewhat nearer future than what we've got right now, with the ability to do particulate matter down to 2.1, you know, and we would have also ACE2S, SO2, things which were sort of basic to a community air monitoring system. So, you're sort of forgetting that they supplied you with the money, it is now in your ballpark to actually produce. This isn't part of the agreement, you're right. It was never intended to be part of the agreement, it's part of your job.
So, without having an argument, please go through the chair in the future, council members.
Through the chair, then.
As well as the speaker, and then certainly without objection from the council, why don't you go ahead and respond?
I have not omitted the Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program. I have stated that it is not a part of this agreement. The community will be served. It's set up for Beniscians and surrounding communities once the air monitoring station is up and running. So, in no way have I omitted that portion of it. I'm speaking today of the agreement that's before you to sign. So, Benicia will be fortunate to have the B Camp, the Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program, but it is not going to be city-run, it's not going to be state-run, it's not going to be run by the refinery. It's going to be a nonprofit organization. And I think your responsibility is about what you, as the city council, can put forward as the best representation for air quality and safety, health and safety for Beniscians.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of Ms. Butel? Thank you so very much. Marilyn Bardet?
Here, our chief, Chadwick, and our city manager and new city attorney. I do appreciate what you've tried to craft here, and I see all the good points of it, but I agree that it is limited in certain ways that are extremely important. And it's, maybe I'm so used to reading between the lines is why I took it very seriously to read this. And I agree, there was no opportunity for us to participate in this negotiation, so here we are. I would like to offer, from my own experience, all the way back to 2000, when Valero bought the refinery from Exxon, within a couple of years, we knew that they were going to be doing the VIP Improvement Project. By 2003, they had had many problems, extreme flaring that was routine, pretty routine. Then there was an asphalt plant fire in 2003. And what's important to remember about this is there were other incidents, and there was reporting of a sort that told us what had happened in the asphalt plant fire. There was a big black plume that was moving towards downtown. Valero actually recognized, under the leadership of, I think it was the manager Buckaloo at the time, recognized they had a problem because they were having consistent problems, and it was recognized by the city. Everybody was concerned. I think the best thing the city ever did, that I recall in relationship to Valero's promise to do what they called a safety reliability study, they hired RECT Engineering, a big firm, to do a comprehensive study of what's going on at the refinery for root causes. That even got down to managerial practices, protocols, interviews with employees. It was quite extraordinary. The public, though, had to have trust in this. The city council recognized, they also had to have trust in such a comprehensive study. So the city council hired another engineering firm called MRS, based in Santa Barbara, and they were tasked to review very technical information, plus the protocols and methodology of RECT Engineering. They did a superb job. They dogged it, you know, they were making assessments as findings were made. They opened this up to the public, because Dana Dean and I, and I remember you, Tom, were very interested in this. We all went through some pretty tedious meetings, some of them lasting, you know, certainly more than an hour. And we had, over a period of two years, a review that really brought us to some conclusion by the end, because MRS did a fantastic job. And we could say, jeez, Valero was making every effort to do this, but they were willing to have that expertise and oversight of another engineering firm. I believe this, considering that in May 2017, with a PGA knee screw-up and the shutdown that was unexpected by Valero, and then, and yet, we don't know how the managers handled that, that's something's working through the courts. Now, we've had an incident that lasted from March 13th to the 23rd. We had no information during that period, I'm sorry, I need water, but, no information during that period about what was in our air. We knew, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we're just going to put you on pause.
Okay. Thank you. It's because it's important. Sorry. Shaking too. That's better. Thank you. During that period, I went out and photographed the scrubber and what was coming out of the stack, because I got a call telling me that there was strange darkness to the plume coming out on March 13th. By the 23rd, this incident continued for 10 days. I went out to the refinery on March 23rd, the day before the shutdown, and spent one minute, on industrial way, photographing the plume with my window down in the car. So I have a video of that. And it was extensive, and the smell was ungodly. And I've smelled a lot of smells in the industrial park, but this was really hideous, and when I closed the window, the smell of the car was pretty horrendous. I reported this to the CAP. I said this. And basically, the CAP, at the CAP, we were informed that a company out of Arkansas, Little Rock, Arkansas, had been called in, in and out, apparently, to give a review of what had happened during that period. The public wasn't informed.
So Marilyn, you need a couple of seconds and wrap it up?
Okay, my point is that we really could use, in this agreement, some stipulation for outside expertise at Valero's expense, that's how it was in 2003, to be able to come in and analyze for the benefit of public health and safety, what is actually going on. Because it's not just a matter, I felt patronized when I heard that only two units were involved, but what units?
Okay, so I just want to see if I capture that you're recommending that there be an amendment that includes stipulation of outside expertise that would give a report back to us?
Correct.
Thanks. Thanks very much. Anybody else wishing to address the council on this item?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name's William Eames Jr., you're aware of that. I'd like to make a general remark about what's transpired here. I'm sorry I came in late, about investing our fire department. I think they're just about one of the best investments this community can make. We demand a lot of them. They're smart, you don't get anything for nothing. We're getting quite a bit from these folks, and I think we should create that position, and I think we should do it happily and willingly. I've spoken quite a bit with staff. I like to think that I'm not wasting your time. The last discussion I had was with Chief Chadwick, took a half an hour with me. That's a lot of time. That costs the city a lot of money. And it's going to continue. You're going to have a good fire department, you're going to have a good community, and I would expect you to pay for it. One thing that we're kind of loathe to do is to criticize the public. We have, Jason Fine is putting together a CERT program. Unfortunately, I can only go through a couple of sessions of it, and that's the other end of this, Councilman Strabridge, that people are kind of go, well, what's going on? I don't know anything. The reason that people say that is that they do not get involved. There are not enough people in the CERT program. Fire departments, I'm not going to criticize you, they want you to come and join them, but I'll make that remark. And so, instead of placing the responsibility, the city council should inform us, or some committee should inform us, the citizens should take it on themselves to be informed. And that should begin with something like a CERT program, which is not developed enough. We're just trying to get it going minimally. If it was developed more, you could just talk to the CERT captain, they'd talk to their neighbors, and everybody would know. You wouldn't be worrying about the media or misinformation or anything like that. So if we can utilize what we have, pay for what we want, then things will be better. Now, I'm sorry I missed public comment. What this city needs is another point of view. And so, this is the inaugural issue of another magazine, all right? Somebody told me they were tired of hearing my fishing story. Well, I wanted to verify it, Councilwoman Campbell, and I called ahead, and the fisherman has passed, so I won't really know exactly how it was we made it to safe harbor. You just have to rely on me for the truth. But it's time for another story, and I'm going to write that one, too. So, here's a copy of the magazine. It's surprising enough, it's called Solano Beacon. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Are there any questions of Mr. Eames? Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to address the council on this item? All right, then I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back. I'd like to get started with, if I could do a follow-up with the city attorney, there's no objection, and then we'll continue the questioning by council member Young and any others who have questions. So let me go back to one of the fundamental questions, which is the issue with the paragraph 15 on termination, paragraph three. And it talks about that the testimony indicated that it wouldn't take very much for this to be violated, because the federal government could come down on the state and create problems. to be violated, because the federal government could come down on the state and create problems. I do know a little bit about environmental law in California, and I have a little bit more confidence about how can withstand certain things. But I thought I would ask the expert that we've hired. And so, Mr. Stock, can you address that?
Thank you. Yes, this provision was inserted by the city to give the city flexibility to further regulate and not be bound by this agreement. That was the purpose of this provision, for you all to understand that. And if the Valero interprets this provision to be of such a low threshold that the federal government lowers the federal law to a certain extent, and we enact an ordinance that's more restrictive, and they want to use that as a termination clause, if they do that, we still have the ability to regulate and enact ordinance similar to this agreement. So it really, in my mind, gives the city the flexibility to continue, so we don't contract away our police power, and that's why that was inserted in here, but also making clear that if we exercise our police power, Valero is not bound by this agreement.
Okay, any further questions on that? Councilmember Campbell?
I think, yeah, Kathy Carriage may have a point there. It's the way it's written, applicable state or federal laws. And you argue, your logic there is basically, let's say the federal government just goes totally off the reservation and makes, you know, makes it, for lack of a better word, they make it easy to violate, you know, existing environmental laws, because they've raised the floor, you know, quite a bit, you know? And so, we, you know, the state has a level, it says basically, you gotta have this level of, say, air pollution control. The federal government says, no, you're going to raise it to here. You know, well, okay, the way you've got it there, it's one or the other. If the state has a fairly strict air pollution rule, and the federal government then relaxes its level, then the burden, it's state or federal. So that means that you just sort of ignore the state, the federal one has made it a lot less burdensome to pollute the environment, then that would be a trigger to terminate this, even if the state one was...
No, the trigger is when the city enacts an ordinance that's more restrictive of state or federal law. So in your hypothetical, if the federal government guts an environmental air pollution, and then the city sought to address that by an ordinance requiring certain particulate levels, there's an argument that's probably preemptive, but even if we got over that argument, if the city enacts an ordinance that's more restrictive of a federal law, that's when this gets triggered, not just by the federal government relaxing environmental regulations.
Okay, so then, Carrie, now just one step farther. Let's say the state just says, or the city says, okay, we're going to follow federal air emissions routes, you know, across the board like that. And then again, the federal government, you know, so we set basically a floor, so to speak, that we aren't going to go below, and the federal government then says, well, we're going to relax, you know, the rules. Say, you know, let's use particulate matter. Let's say now they say that, you know, we want to go down 2.5 microns or something like that, you know, say a state, you know, does that. But then the federal government says, well, that's fine and dandy, but, you know, we say, you know, it's, you know, like a thousand times that. So they just say, okay, maybe it's like, you know, 200 or 2,000 microns is okay. Then we've gone along with the state, we have enacted something, and the federal government has then sort of, you know, basically gutted, you know, what we did.
If we enact an ordinance after that point in time, correct, they could use, Valero could use that as a trigger to terminate the agreement. But then my rebuttal is, we could also enact other legislation, if this is terminated, to address, I think, the concern you're addressing.
Right, such as the industrial safety ordinance. So this agreement is taking the place of the industrial safety ordinance goals, not every aspect of it, but it takes the place of. And so it says automatically upon, this is terminated, automatically upon the city's enactment, this is city's enactment, of any new ordinance that imposes blah, blah, blah. And so, by hewing to the purposes of this agreement, which is, has been iterated by Chief Chadwick, the only reason that it would be terminated is if we adopted an ordinance. And then if all of those other scenes came about that you were describing, we still have, unless the area is occupied by state or federal law, that we can't, we still have the authority. Again, we're not regulating air quality here, we're regulating access to information and having a seat at the table. And so I think that stands on its own. Can I jump into one of the questions that I kept hearing, or one of the questions that is on the root cause? My understanding from our meeting and from the report is that the root cause analysis is pursuant to the regulations that were adopted in 2017 by Cal OSHA and Cal EPA. And so that for the incident that, this is after the incident of May 7th, 2017, so we didn't get the state-regulated root cause analysis, but now, for any incident such as the one in March, we will get a root cause analysis. Is that correct?
That is correct. And currently, they're working on that for the most recent March incident. That's in section five, on page two of the agreement, or page 29 of the full packet, I guess. That's where the root cause comes into play. And we will get that, if this agreement is approved, we will get that moving forward.
So I heard some really, I heard some other really good comments, and I really appreciate them. And I would love to entertain amending the agreement to include some of these issues. But I want to get at the issue of amending the agreement. I noticed that the agreement is signed. Is there a reason for that? Ms. Tenfall or Mr. Stock?
Our practice is to have an agreement that comes before you be signed, so we know it's not subject to change by the other party.
And then what happens if we, through tonight's proceedings, that we do make changes?
If you make changes, we have to go back to Valero and negotiate those changes.
And what is the likelihood of any one or all of the changes that some of us might want?
I can't answer the likelihood question. Depends on the changes and the scope?
I can. I think it's very, it's highly unlikely. I think we'd be back at square one.
So can you elaborate on that a little bit?
And to me, it's pretty straightforward. I think we would be back at square one. We were given direction by council to go to Valero and negotiate an agreement. It wasn't a, it wasn't a direction to involve a public committee or anything like that. We were given a specific direction to go to Valero and negotiate agreement. We worked hard to get to that point, we finally got there, and I think if we were to start all over again, it would, it could easily fall apart.
Okay, well, that helps clear the air for that. So let's take some final questions from council member Young.
Yeah, I guess I would differ with the chief on that last characterization. This is the first time we've seen this agreement, and we're being asked presumably to accept it, take it or leave it. I don't think that's the right approach. I think there are ways that it can be improved, and I would hope to make some suggested improvements through a motion. And if it goes back to Valero and they don't like it, then I can't believe that they're going to walk away from it, depending on what it is. But I guess we'll find out. So, I do want to finish up my...
Yeah, right, and then Chief Chadwick on that topic, about Valero walking away from this?
The question was, do I, what do I think? And is there another question?
Well, he just said he didn't think that Valero would walk away from it, and you've been negotiating with them, so it's a little unclear to me that we would have much success, according to what you're telling us.
Essentially, we've put everything that has been presented in the industrial safety ordinance that the community, and the Benicia community, and the outside consultant has wanted. We put it in the form of an agreement as per the direction. We specifically left out certain things. We're not going to put in our agreement things that are requirements upon us. The perfect example is, if we go out and we do portable air monitoring, we're not going to hold that back from the public. It's public information, but we're not going to put it in an agreement with Valero that says we're required to do that.
Why?
I could go back to the, to Ben on that one, but my original version, the very first version, it had information about the community air monitors, it had information about the fence line air monitors that was in the staff report. And I was told that that information, that those documents have already been dealt with through other agreements, specifically the second agreement to the Good Neighbor Steering Committee Agreement and other council action, so that it didn't belong in an additional legal document, to just reiterate what's already the case. And if we're drafting an agreement with somebody else, why would we put requirements upon the city?
So that the public knows that it's in there.
Everything in here is saying that the public knows we have the ability, we don't need an agreement with Valero to say that the fire department will share a piece of city information. That wouldn't go in an agreement. That could just be simple direction from council to tell us to do that.
So, so there are no restrictions on the city providing information to the public, and therefore, why would you want to put in an agreement that Valero agrees that we could provide information to the public?
Exactly.
All right, let me finish with my questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could. And these are all sort of, this is a significant document, and it's taking the place of an ISO, and it would have a six-year term that would sort of lock in these protocols. And I just want to make it as best as possible. And if that means that it needs to be amended and things are added, so be it. And if Valero wants to walk away because of that, I guess that's their option. But I think it's our obligation, as a city council, to make this as good as we can on behalf of the community. So let me get back to my last few questions. It's, two of the goals that you showed at the beginning was to increase public participation and engagement, and increase public notification and awareness. Towards that end, why could we not ask or require that the CAP meetings be open to the public?
So, I was not around when the CAP meetings were, or that board was established. I, that was the first I had heard that it was a city run. I was told that it was a Valero meeting, and that it was their...
Right, it's their rule, but it has to do with this thing we just talked about, including increasing public participation.
Yeah, so I was just following, I, in my mind, one other option to improve that was to allow another city representative to be at those meetings. I guess there's four meetings a year. One of them is public, the other three apparently aren't. I believe, I've, going back to council member Largospata's question earlier about it starting to already happen, we, I've gone to the last four meetings, or three meetings, I believe, already. And so they're already sort of following through with that.
Right, but it's just not open to the public.
Yeah, and so, I can't answer why. Maybe it can be if it's a city meeting...
If there's no objection from the council as a point of information, could I call Ms. Bardet, who could briefly describe the origin of the CAP?
Well, first of all, the CAP as a concept was started by the American Chemical Manufacturing Industry, many years ago, in the 1980s, because of Bhopal in India, and what happened to so many people. So they advised that industry find a way of better communicating with its public and know what the public thinks. It's a two-way stretch. But it's always been instituted by industry for industry's benefit, and they at any time could decide to close the CAP. They can also keep the journalists out. This, their prerogative, they run the meetings. It doesn't mean that there can't be communication, or occasionally someone invited to the CAP, but the city council does have the role of appointing the community members at large. And I would say, with deference to what you did, that, yes, if you have a new fireperson as part of this agreement, it would be logical that they would go to the CAP meeting.
Right. Thanks. Are there any questions of Ms. Bardet?
So your opinion is that it's not necessary to make this open to the public?
I think you could ask for it, but I would wonder what Valero would say. It would be probably unusual. Under the, you know, the way it is set up in industry is, CAPs are set up by corporations in the chemical industry.
But that is, I understand that, but like it or not, the CAP is sort of the only function, the only body that serves as a mechanism to inform the public, other than coming through their representatives and...
So I'm just, I might add, I would add that it was...
And through the chair, if we could try to follow the protocol through the chair. So, your point is that it's an industry concept, that, and that industry chooses how it's implemented. There is nothing to prevent the city from having its own information, once we have a person in place to convene meetings to provide the public information, as long as we're not told that it's proprietary, and that we meet all the standards that we have been advised about.
I just would like to add one thing. Valero didn't need to do a CAP, or might not have done one. It was citizens that initiated it, back, the GNC helped do a petition drive to ask Valero to establish a CAP.
Okay. Moving on.
I think we have a question of Ms. Bardet, councilmember Campbell, and then a question of Ms. Bardet by councilmember Largospata? Great.
Okay, either Councilman Young or Ms. Bardet, whoever wants to do it. Under the logic we got here, I don't understand why it wouldn't be fair game to have all the meetings open. You know, we have one already that's a public meeting, and every bit of information, because I was on it for a couple of years, I remember, every bit of information that I've got, I bring back here, and if anyone feels like hearing it, I can blab out every single word that was said in that CAP. It's public information. So, you know, for all intents and purposes, saying they're all public meetings versus, you know, having it come out secondary is pretty much the same thing. So if your, if your goal is to ask us to, you know, go along with having all the meetings be open to the public, you know, that in essence is what we're already doing, because there is nothing which comes out of a CAP which isn't, you know, capable being set up here, you know, on camera, on TV, what have you. So if that's your goal, I'm fine with it. I really don't see why Valero would be opposed to that. They're already, in essence, doing that even if they may not realize it.
I think the advantage would be that if it could be televised, because it's very hard when you, our job is to go back to the public that we know and we communicate with and share information, but as you know how hard it is to do that.
Okay, and then councilmember Largospata, thanks for standing and responding.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a big, council, I always say Congress, I always want to say Congressman Campbell, sorry. Councilmember, right, councilmember Campbell, I think, answered the question, because the question I was going to ask either of you is, is there, is there something that prevents the city council member from coming back and reporting on those meetings? Because it's in the agenda every week where council has the opportunity to provide reports, so I was just kind of wondering if there was something. But it sounds like if a council member, the council, the rep should be exercising his or her right to bring that information to the public at council meetings.
I would say, to your point, it would have been nice if we could have heard from council, what is the status of the fence line monitoring system since it was installed in December? And basically, we've got operation, it's not reliably operational, and Don Cuffel has talked about this at two CAP meetings, but it's not publicly understood.
So, so what we said at the last CAP meeting was that they were posting the information, including the PowerPoint, as I remember. And I said that, in response to your comment, that we have a, what we do is that we list all the committees that we serve on, and then there's always the opportunity to have the council pull the item or ask questions about the item. So we could change that, and we could make a mandatory report out, and I don't have any problem with that. That would be on us, that wouldn't be on Valero. But they were being, saying that each of us representing the public, representing Benicia Unified School District and the city, that they, Valero is expecting us to come back and provide the information. And as I said, that information is contained in the minutes and the presentations that are offered. So we can consider that, that's not, but that's not part of the agreement, that's on us. Council, councilmember Campbell?
Getting back to Councilman Young here, I want to make sure I understand what you want to do. It's just, you just want to open up the meetings to, anyone in the public wants to go to it? That seems pretty reasonable to me, you know? I don't know if Valero wants to comment on that or not, but, you know, I just, it's already essentially open to the public, and, you know, it's not really been heavily attended by the public, even on the public meeting there. by the public, even on the, the public meeting there. So it just doesn't seem like that's much of a jump to just go along with that. But if that's what you want, that, that makes perfect sense to me.
Ms. Tenfo?
Thank you. I just, nobody's mentioned it yet, but they do post all of the materials for the CAP on a website now, all of the agendas, all of the minutes, all of the presentations. And so anyone who wants to see what's going on at a CAP meeting, it's very easy to do. I think that's a new thing that they've been doing maybe the past year. And so to the points that you all are making, the information certainly is readily available. My understanding is that Valero doesn't want them to be public because they do want to have some control over the attendance, except for that one community meeting. So I don't think that we could decide for them that they, those meetings should be open to the public. We would certainly be happy to convey that to them as a request.
If I may add to the discussion, what I think would be extremely beneficial is for the city to take the leadership in providing information to the community. We aren't limited by space, we're not limited by time, and we can call in people. We had questions at the last CAP meeting, and it would have been helpful to have a representative from the area district. And so I think that however you want to go with that, the, my goal is to have more public meetings with more information. And I don't care if we do it through the CAP, I don't think it's going to work very well. I do care that we get it established by the city. More questions?
Thank you. Yeah, the, the idea of opening it up, it, you may be right, nobody might want to go. All the information could be available already. Given that, I'm not sure what the downside is of just opening the doors and allowing somebody to go in and observe. But moving on, the 72-hour post-incident report. This is the same report that is issued to the county and BackMed and other regulators. Is that right?
No, my understanding is that that's the same one that's issued to the county in Contra Costa. I don't believe there was one that was required for Solano County.
So this would be new?
It would be new. It, I, I, I mean, I hate to say plagiarized, but I pretty much photocopied the Contra Costa one and put Benicia on it and made a few minor edits and, and thought it was a great, a great system.
All right. My question is, it's certainly important to have that information, and 72 hours, I guess is a reasonable time, but there are other incidents that are planned incidents, turnarounds, ma- major maintenance issues, which result in more than normal flaring. Why couldn't we add a requirement that Valero notify the community 72 hours in advance of those because they're planned, they know that they're going to happen? And in that case, the people who may have sensitivities to the things that are going to be released would have an opportunity to be notified in advance, and I think that would simply be a, an improvement on the existing contract.
So there, the 72-hour notification isn't the only notification that they are required under this agreement. There is...
In advance?
Yes.
Okay.
But the, the other important component to that is that they're, they're not allowed to notify publicly if they're going to shut down or they're going to do a major turnaround due to market shares, gas prices go up or down based on it, and they, there's, there's laws that they're not allowed to publicly put that out, just like they're not in Contra Costa County.
That's in law.
That's, yes. But they do notify us before, if they know that they're going to flare, they'll notify us. Now, that's not, that shouldn't create a public hazard, don't get me wrong. That's just visible, either flame or particulate that you can see that might cause concern, and they're required to contact us, and we would then, you know, figure out what we're going to do.
But we wouldn't tell the public?
I, I would have the, we would be allowed to. If, if there's a public hazard, absolutely, I would tell the public. It's just at what level. You, the other part to think about is that, I, I think there's been, ever since the May incident in 2017, there's been a misperception of what flaring is. So the flare is always going. It would be incredibly bad if the flare was not on at an operating refinery unless they were shut down. The flaring needs to happen, right? So there's concern, there's lots of incidents where then the flare increases and it becomes more visible, and it's a concern, but it has no off-site impacts. They, per the Benicia notification policy, they are required to notify us. Now, if every time that the flame gets a little bit bigger and they notify us, we do a alert Solano notification. I do have a concern that it creates a, a bit of a cry wolf if there's no public health impacts at all. So that's something that emergency managers are always having to weigh, is how much of that goes out. We've, our practice lately has been using social media more for the smaller notification, hey, if you see an increased flare, it's planned or it's going on, and don't worry, we'll notify you if there's something that's going to go offsite or impact health.
Right.
And that's happening.
So through, through the chair, I, I totally get that, and I understand that flaring is routine. I was under the impression that when there is a major turnaround or shutdown for whatever reason, that the flaring itself, that the flare, composition of the flares change, and that there are different kinds of releases that are happening.
So if you look at, if you look at the, I'm going to go to take, it's just a second to get there. If you look at page 39 of the report, I mean, there's a statement in there where they're notifying us, "In the event in which it may cause general public concern, such as cases of fire explosion, smoke, or excessive flaring." So this is under the onsite only, no offsite and no health concerns, they're still required to notify us. It's not a, it doesn't trigger the 72-hour report, but it requires, it triggers their operations superintendent contacting our dispatch center, who contacts the division chief.
I'm, I'm just trying to get to a point where the public has noticed, notified that, oh, two days from now, this is going to happen, and stay inside if you're susceptible to this kind of thing. What you said earlier was, that can't happen.
I, I don't think that there would be a situation where they would know two days ahead that they're going to do something that's going to create a public health concern. If it's going to create a public health concern, yeah, I'm going to know about it, and we're going to tell people.
Okay. I'll, I'll move on.
Ms...
I'm sorry?
I heard a comment. So maybe we could have a little clarification. I think there is some misunderstanding. The question that Councilmember Young, and correct me if I'm not asking it correctly, is that we know that there are planned shutdowns on the facility, and we as a city are notified. And I also have seen where the, Valero puts out notice to the public for the major turnaround. So we have notice on that. Sometimes when they start up, they have hiccups, and so there is a burst of some kind of pollutant, often it's visible, and that is concerning to the public. That would be a public health issue?
Well, again, if, if you as a council want to give me direction that we're going to do a mass notification every time that there's any incident, whether it is a public health issue or not, we can get that direction independent of, of Valero.
So help me understand the, the trigger point for public health. What, what are your standards that you're using for determining that the public needs to be notified because it's a public health issue?
Well, it's a very dynamic question. It depends on what the pollutant is, if it's, I mean, particularly like with this last one with particulate matters. I had to consult the county health director. We basically used the, the Cal EPA's requirements for unhealthy, and it hit the point where it was recommended for a shelter in place for sensitive groups. We aired on the side of the caution, even though it wasn't a 24-hour, hour average, it was just a spot bump in those, and we issued it. So we air on the side of caution. It, it's totally going to be dependent on what the situation is, and I, I, it's just difficult to answer. There's no like magic, every time it gets to a four, we do it.
So clarify then the March 23rd incident, where it had been described that they felt that they were, Valero felt that they were getting control of the situation and that the issue was diminishing in terms of the seriousness. And then there was the evening of the 23rd, and it just started emitting lots and lots of particulates. At what point was that determined to be a public health issue?
So the, so it was well before it was a public health issue, we were sending the social media notifications, and even, I believe, a press release, or maybe even two press releases. We didn't do the alert Solano until I had communication with the public, the county public health director. We evaluated the numbers. He said it really doesn't meet the threshold because it wasn't a 24-hour particulate 2.5, but he said, air on the side of caution, I would go ahead and do it. So that's when that decision was made.
Okay.
Just a couple more. So one of the frustrations I had with both of the incidents was the fact that Valero never came to the council despite being invited and talked about what happened. That was true when the, they had the shutdown because of the electrical PG&E issue, and it was also true last March. So what would prevent us, again, nothing would prevent us, but I would like to see something that would commit Valero to attending the next regularly scheduled council meeting after a major incident and make themselves available for questioning. And I would, I would, you know, I'll, I'll make that into motion later, but is there, why, just trying to get your reaction to something like that?
Well, my reaction is the requirements are that they notify us immediately when something happens. They're required to give us a 72-hour report, and they're required to give us the incident investigation for the root cause when they have it. So if we, one, if we create a timeline that says the immediate next council meeting after an event, you might not have any information that you want. You may be asking a bunch of questions that they're not able to answer. So unlike what we are at currently, we followed the, the, all of the language that the community's been saying that they want in this draft ISO that we were given, and all of those things gave that information to the public. And now it's going to be publicly available. When each of those triggers happen, they're going to be on the public information bank. I totally agree with the mayor that we could do like town hall type meetings, open to the public and present that information, and we can certainly invite Valero to it. I don't believe it needs to be part of the...
Couldn't we require them to attend as part of this agreement?
Well, it wasn't in any of the ISOs, it wasn't in Contra Costa's ISO, that's the first I've ever heard of it, but I think some things work better. We have, I've been working for the last year to build relationships with them, and I feel like we've made some success, and I, I honestly feel like if we invited them and worked with them, that, yeah, we would have more success that way. Could, could we force it? You, you earlier said that you think that we could get more out of this and renegotiate and have them come back to agree to stuff like that? I, I, I'm not able to answer that.
I'm just saying, I, I think it's a expectation, maybe not a requirement, but I think to have them come to the council meeting where they are explaining in public on television what happened, and, and the public is allowed to come and ask questions, is a, even if they don't have all the information, I get, I get that. But to boil it all down into a report that will be technical in nature, I don't think serves the interests of the general public. It may serve our particular interests, but I'm not sure the, I think the public wants the ability to hear what happened in layman's terms. And I don't think it's, it's up to us to, to speak for Valero when something like that happens.
Okay. And what I've been hearing all along through the chair is that we, we have, that the public hasn't had the access to those documents, and we are missing out from what's across the bay because we haven't had access to those documents. This is the first time I'm hearing that now we want it in layman's terms from them. My experience with them is, I mean, and no offense to Valero, but sometimes they're, they talk in attorney talk and, you know, corporate talk, and sometimes I think that we would be better served with having the report in front of us and have the public liaison, division chief and, and, and myself be able to answer questions for deciphering those reports, but it certainly is direction that you could provide.
Okay. Last question about the EOCs. So the agreement says that we would have sort of reciprocal access to each other's EOC. My question is if the liaison or yourself were to go to the Valero EOC during an incident, would we have unfettered access to what's happening in the refinery, or would we be confined to simply staying in the EOC?
The position would definitely be in the EOC. Nobody just, you can't just wander around a refinery, especially during an emergency incident, so that would be inappropriate in my eyes. The position that is identified is a liaison position, and don't, not to be confused with the liaison position for the, for the agreement, but a liaison position is a identified position in the emergency organization chart of an EOC. A liaison person is part of the command staff in an EOC, so they're are purvey to the command staff meetings. They sit with the, the incident commander or the emergency, the director and the, the EOC director, and they are in that decision-making process. It's a very important position.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that answers your question. So no, they're not going to, you know, wander around the plant or the emergency, and they're really not even going to wander around the EOC. They have a role, and that's a very specific role, but it's a high-level role.
All right, thank you.
So let me see if I can summarize what I heard some of the desired amendments are to the MOU. The, the complaint about not being part of the negotiating is noted, and the issue with a proprietary standard. So is there a way to say that when there's a claim of proprietary information, that there's acceptable standard that can be applied? Or is this something that has to be spelled out in the agreement?
So, the agreement talks about proprietary information, and the parties would have to meet and confer on what proprietary, what normally happens when someone asserts a privilege is they have to back that up, what it's based on. And it's my understanding, talking with the fire chief, 99% of the proprietary information we've already dealt with by the time we get the document. We haven't really had any problems in the past about defining what proprietary means in this context. But if they were, if either party was being overly aggressive and couldn't back up their, their position on why proprietary under the law, then it would be a breach, and the agreement would, you know, trigger all our contractual remedies. And again, I want to emphasize that also, we always have the ability, if this agreement's not working, to enact legislation. So there's, you know, there was a comment earlier about the term, and I think all those things relate to the fact that this is going to be a, we have, we have to see how it operates. We didn't want it to go on forever, because we want to see what we can change if there's something that's not working. And so is, is that balanced to have a definite term so we can rely on it, but not have it be indefinite?
So, okay, so proprietary, if there's false claim, it's a breach.
Correct.
That's, thanks.
That's a short answer.
Then we had discussion about CAP, and so we could amend the agreement to say that this agreement provides for public meeting. I prefer my idea, which is to take the information that we have and have the city conduct the meetings in a commodious place where there's enough room and accommodations. I will admit that we don't serve cheese, but that, but we, we would have that, and that seems to me that serves the public's interest. But I'm not, that's just a, my sense about the value that we would have in a meeting. I'm not sure, because I really recall that Ms. Bardet has described the CAP process many times, and I always forget that it started with the American Chemical Association. So, so that's just it. Do we want to say in the agreement is the amendment, or default to our running the meetings with the information?
So again, it's council's purview to, to bring that up, but in reality, there's nothing stopped the agreement saying that a fire chief or representative can be there doesn't stop that from happening, as I understand it.
Right. No, it doesn't.
Yeah, so, I would think...
Okay, well, that would be a choice then for the council, if there's an amendment to that. The root cause, I think we clarified that, yes, there shall be a root cause pursuant to state regulations, and that will be provided pursuant to the agreement. There's no advance notice because of the indication that you said it was against the law. I think fine-tuning that, give that some thought, because we, we would not say advance notice for regular shutdown in, in contrary to state law, but we could refine that. So that's the third item to think about. There's no penalties. I heard... I heard that, that, that was the question. So Mr. Stock, the penalty is it's a breach?
It's a breach of contract.
And we could draft a, or we could look at the industrial safety ordinance and adopt that.
If it's a breach of contract, we'd be relieved from the contract and we can do whatever we want in our regulatory capacity. We can do that regardless of whether there's a breach. We can, you know, adopt an ISO and then the agreement goes away. But if there's a breach, your, Valero is subjecting themselves to regular contract damages, which they're not part, they're not subjected to now. And those contract damages can include whatever our damages are, but also specific performance or injunctive relief. So we would have, just like any other garden variety breach of contract claim, we would have the ability to have a remedy under the breach of contract principles.
So I'm not an expert on contract law, but I'm assuming that it's better than an ordinance because an ordinance is a regulatory violation unless it stipulates in the ordinance the violation cost?
It's different. It's two different animals. An ordinance creates penalties, can create penalties and be very specific. It can also create a nuisance standards and you can sue for public nuisance on that. A contract creates contractual remedies, which are again, damages, specific performance and/or injunctive relief.
Okay, so that would be a consideration. Let me see, we had testimony about the people's right to know and I think this agreement is trying to get there. Same data given to the city's status of air quality. There was the issue of ambient air quality and it is true that much of what you address is incidents for that are incidents of public health threat. But there is chronic, chronic pollution. It's a major concern, actually it's probably even worse than the incidents. And so you don't have a jurisdiction for that or the expertise on that?
Again, I was following what was in the draft ISO that did not have anything additional other than what's already been agreed through since then on the Good Neighbors, the second agreement, amendment to the Good Neighbors Steering Agreement and the Backmed Rule twelve fifteen or, or what, that's where that came from. So we weren't given direction to add additional requirements for more monitors to them.
Okay, so that's a question. Then we had desire to see a stipulation of outside expertise and that's permissive under this agreement. You can seek outside expertise, is that correct?
Absolutely. It's written in there.
Okay. Well, Ames suggested that we could legislate critical thinking. I don't know that I'm interested in trying to legislate that. Point of order, sure. You need to be at the mic, please?
Just wonder about the reliable operation of the fence line monitoring system as a condition because you're dependent on it in C1, the attachment to the agreement. Mentions a fence line monitoring, using data from it if, it says if applicable, but I think it needs to be reliably operational as a condition of your signing this.
Thanks. Can you address that?
Again, this, that wasn't the direction we were given. That's being enforced by Bay Area Quality. They're working on it. It's the most advanced fence line monitoring in the state right now. I'm, I'm a little, I'm just surprised that we've put all of these items into an agreement, got to the point where we're ready to, to put it for approval and now we're going to start adding a bunch of new ones that weren't discussed. And, and it's, it's, my feeling of it passing through, maybe we should just start back into ISO if that's the, the direction we want to go and if we think we can get back and get there.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Well, the council majority will give us some direction in just a moment. Lock-in protocols, I'd forgotten what that meant. You, you were, one of the first questions that you raised was locking in protocols. Do you remember? You can get, you can get back to me on that. And then we had, so we discussed, there seemed to be some interest in amending the agreement to provide the cap as an open meetings. And there was some discussion, but I didn't hear a discussion with the council about adding that Valero would be required to come to a next regular meeting. I, I really don't think that makes a whole lot of sense for the reasons that I've said. So I'm looking for someone to make a motion to either approve the agreement as presented or recommendations for amendments.
I'll move to approve the resolution as recommended before us.
Right, is there a second, a second discussion? Start with Councilmember Young and then Councilmember Campbell.
Okay, so I want to sort of ask my colleagues. Are we comfortable with the idea that the ombudsman should be a division chief in the fire department as opposed to an outside contracted firm, for example?
Definitely. Very comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Are, so I, I would.
If I could just embellish something, you know, for now, and you know, this is a living document. If, you know, if we have trouble with it, oh, I can't imagine what we would, but if we did, you know, this could be changed at some point in the future.
No, I'm just saying, we're, we're approving a hire with associated costs that will go on into the future, which could be long past the term of this agreement.
Probably not. You know, that person is there specifically for this agreement and to enforce pretty much all the parts of it, you know, if the agreement goes away.
The person doesn't go away.
Why wouldn't the person go away?
Why wouldn't they?
Yeah.
Well, I assume because this is a regular division chief within the fire department and they're not going to be let off. I don't know.
Well, let's see what the chief says here, you know, I mean, at least the way I understand it, this is a division chief in charge of basically public liaison and enforcing the various parts of the agreement and the, you know, for lack of a better word to describe it, he is our seat at the table when we're dealing with Valero. So if the agreement goes away.
It, it would be an at-will position.
And in addition, there's the, I actually, the one thing I hear constantly in the last fourteen years is that the city hires too many consultants and I think that there's a fair case that has been made by the chief about the value of having a city employee who's loyal and knowledgeable with local knowledge about the city. Next.
Yeah, so I, well, let's see, if the maker of the motion is amenable to an amendment that would require the cap meetings to be open to the public.
Well, I, I think we covered that. I thought that we were going to bring it back and it's going to be done through a workshop here in the council chambers. I think the mayor made that recommendation. So I think that it's up to us or the person that's on that committee to come and report to the public in a televised way. That's where I'm coming from with that. I agree with the mayor.
Councilmember Campbell?
Well, how about for this, you know, that, we put that a little bit over off the actual agreement and say, go to Valero and see if it's okay to do the way you want to do, which is basically open up all the cap meetings to the public. It seems like it's already been done for, in essence, you know, so just put it in writing, define it or however you want to do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can include it in the motion. If we don't have support for that, then that would be the.
Well, you could make the motion.
Well, we shouldn't accept it.
The motion maker could make the motion that, you know, it's sort of a separate, also give direction to staff to go talk to Valero about it.
So we have, so we have marginal agreement that it wouldn't be part of the motion to adopt, but it would be direction to staff for asking Valero to have the cap meetings open to the public.
The last thing I wanted to add to the motion, if acceptable, is the, the issue of the portable monitoring data, specifically saying that portable monitoring data will also be available to the public.
So Chief.
You said it could be.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that real quick. So it certainly could be and I think it would be when it's, when it, in certain instances, but the other parts of this is that. So those portable monitors, where we use them lots of times is we'll get an odor complaint and they'll say, you know, one, two, three, you know, First Street, we smell an odor. And so we'll go, take the engine out and we'll go to one, two, three, First Street and we'll test it and we'll start walking the neighborhood or driving to specific spots and checking downwind of the areas. And we're monitoring a screen on this portable monitor and we're not sitting there writing down a log of every reading we find. Now, if we get to the point where we have an alarm or something shows that there's a abnormal reading, then we write it down and log it and that's what I think would be appropriate for putting on the public information bank.
That's fine. Yeah, but I, I was thinking more of the incident last May.
Yeah, absolutely.
In, in that instance, people need to know.
Yeah.
And so if we write it into the ordinance that, you know, in, in that kind of an event where there is abnormal readings, but data will be made publicly available as, as soon as possible.
So again, that could be direction to staff because this is not an ordinance. This is an agreement and we don't need to have Valero agree that our fire chief can provide this information to the public. What we need to say is as a council, we direct the fire chief through the city manager to provide this information to the public. And I would welcome that direction from the council. Any other suggested amendments?
Um, no.
Okay, so here's where I am. Very grateful to all of you who have been working on this for a very long time and I see some things where we've made some progress and I'm thrilled about the final settlement agreement with the Good Neighbors Steering Committee and I'm looking forward to B-Camp because I know it's going to be extremely valuable. The reasons that at this time I feel I can support this agreement is because it's enforceable and you've heard the city attorney explain that very clearly. And it's up to us to indicate, the council and, and with your input, if we feel that the, that the terms of the agreement are not being met either in spirit or in law. We have a seat at the table. We've never had a seat at the table. We've been beggars. I don't like being beggars. And so this gives us a seat at the table. We have opportunities to seek staff support for getting expertise in here and having public meetings and having discussions and conversations, inviting the area district. And with all the doubts that we have about some of the quality of the regulations in, in the Bay Area, at least we will have the ability now to bring that, those experts into our community so we can pummel them with our questions. We were told last year, we didn't have funding to look at the community air monitoring program for which there was money and that for which Valero got a whole lot and we didn't because we didn't have the ability to have staff participate in that. That was very disappointing to me when I got that response. So now we have something to work with. So while it's not perfect and it's, it's a small step, it's not a giant leap, it's a small step forward for our public health and safety. I have received many comments, some in addition to what I heard tonight. And most of the comments are concerned about accurate, transparent and trustworthy information about incidents and I also heard tonight, chronic pollution. I recognize that Cal OSHA regards Valero as one of the safest refineries in the state of California. I want nothing less for our public and our community and our schools, children and our workers. And I feel that this gets us closer to that than waiting for a consideration and adoption of an industrial safety ordinance. And if this doesn't work, we will go for an initiative to have an industrial safety ordinance and that is not a slight statement. So I feel that we are closer to getting the public's interest met and for those reasons, I will support the motion. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Patterson, just to clarify, there are no amendments to the motion.
There are no amendments to the motion. There are two directions requested to staff.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Larga Spada?
Yes.
Strawberry?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.